Yeah, hopefully. That's what I wanted whenever we were. We were looking at all our stuff. I thought maybe we.
Speaking of making you miserable.
Hi, Joe. How's everybody doing?
Hanging in there.
I'm so sorry. Is she real sick?
She is pretty sick.
Look at that.
She's.
She's probably not feeling it. And she's happy.
And this is the situation.
No, she's happy. So. Situations, isn't it?
Yeah, she'll be fine.
Well.
I mean, she's very dramatic.
I know.
She's a brat because she's last time. Oh, did you get finished with your note? Oh.
There she carries.
I didn't. I read that one.
And people taking COVID tests.
Five thousand bucks.
I don't think he was any five hundred times.
I saw something going on. I'd like to use like a stopping point.
Come on. Brooke, yes. So cute. Are they being good?
Back.
Uh, this one is naughty.
Didn't abandon you.
Uh, she's orange and she's not orange. And she's two through two sets of bill bags.
Right.
And a charging wire.
Oh, my gosh.
One of these panties. Exactly.
Her hair kind of looks like Trump's. In a way.
She's a redhead.
No, I told the lady that. Why are your lips go like this? And she said, unfortunately, some countries are just, they don't take into their lesson.
Now, you know, I had a good excuse last week.
I think it's Madison.
Last week at least. Weeks preceding that.
It's lovely.
Oh, no, no, I'm in Europe. We're in Europe.
Sandy, how's my hair?
What are his paintings?
I would remind you of that, too.
What's the same color here?
When I'm dead.
All right, I'm shutting up now.
Yeah, nothing else.
It's a good idea.
I will just be over here.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us. Would you please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance? Remain standing at that invocation.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Wilson?
Would you bow while we pray? Gracious God, we pray for peace and hope in our lives and in the lives of all your children. Let us choose you and your peace. Let us sweep out doubt or fear from our hearts and fill ourselves instead with love. We pray for your love to fill all those living in our great city. We ask you to guide us as council members to devote ourselves to serving you by serving all of them. Yes, Lord, I pray for peace and encouragement in our land in the strong name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
It's called Order July twenty first, twenty twenty-two, Council Meeting. Again, with a consideration to approve the agenda, does anyone have any additions, revisions?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to request two additions under Old Business. The first addition is a clarification on zoning for five ninety-one Jackie Moore Lane. And the second is discussion and possible action to adopt an amended intergovernmental agreement for development of property in the Bluffs with the Development Authority of Cherokee County.
Okay. That will be item F and G added to Old Business. Any further changes or revisions? Have a motion?
Motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. All members voted for the motion. Tonight, we have Chief Mayorfield here is here to deliver some special employee awards, so. Welcome, Chief.
Moving slow tonight. Thank you, Council. So we have Officer Mike Shaw and Detective Tanya Cruz here with us tonight. Also, Officer Shaw's family is here with us tonight. A great deal of our department has come because they they understand the importance of this award. Want to congratulate the officers and detectives. And we also have our explorers here tonight, which Detective Cruz is one of our lead advisors for them. So I think this is a great award for them to get to see. I'm I'm I know that all of you saw it on our press release and our social media. Back on June twenty-third, Officer Shaw made a traffic stop on a vehicle for a person using a cellphone while driving. When he made the stop, of course, we make these stops all the time. And he interacted with the people inside the vehicle and just realized that something didn't seem right with the thirteen-year-old female that was in the vehicle and where they were coming from, where they were going, things. Things just didn't add up. So he was able to contact Detective Cruz, who was able to establish a rapport with the thirteen-year-old. And of course, speaking Spanish helped a great deal on this. We they were able to finally realize that this thirteen-year-old was was being transported to another location out of out of state. They were passing, basically passing through the city of Canton. So it was a needle in a haystack that we happened to interrupt this. But they were passing through Canton and that this thirteen-year-old was being taken to another state during a human trafficking and a sex trafficking case. So they were able to, after several hours of working, they were able to reunite the thirteen-year-old with her family. They were able to take the the juvenile that was driving the vehicle and get her into into youth detention center until we can figure out what's going on with her and her world and her family. And just yesterday, Detective Cruz went to North Carolina to assist. That's where this originated, to assist the thirteen-year-old's family and the the police department that's in North Carolina, to assist them to further the investigation of where all this was going to end up and who, how many people were involved in this. So it's it's a very complex investigation that is still going as we as we speak. But the important thing is, tonight, that thirteen-year-old is at home with her family. And her, as as I've said in in my press release, her life has been impacted for the positive because of the actions of Officer Shaw and Detective Cruz. And we talk about the the things we do in law enforcement, and there's a lot of great things we do. But I don't think there's anything more important than when we can rescue a child from a situation as bad as that what this child was in. So both of these officers should be very, very proud of themselves. They have changed a young lady's and possibly two young ladies' lives forever. And so because of that, they've been recommended for, and it's been approved that they're going to receive the Meritorious Service Award tonight. Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you, Chief. And congratulations, Officer Shaw, Detective Cruz. Thank you for all you do, but especially for this amazing award and your your great work on this case. So welcome to our explorers. Glad to have you here tonight. So please come back every meeting, so we'd love to see you. So. So we're going to follow that up. The very special proclamation tonight. So this is City of Canton Proclamation Number two zero two two zero seven two one. A proclamation for Jo Ellen Wilson Day. Whereas Jo Ellen Wilson was born and raised in Bartow County, Georgia. And whereas Jo Ellen came to Cherokee County in the early nineteen sixties to pursue an associate's degree in liberal arts from Reinhardt College. And whereas Jo Ellen and her husband, Mr. John, moved to Canton in nineteen sixty-eight and have claimed our community as home for well over fifty years. Whereas Jo Ellen quickly became a leader in her new hometown, serving Reinhardt College, now Reinhardt University, as the Vice President of Advancement, among many other titles. And whereas Jo Ellen chose not only to live and work in our city, but also to serve through volunteer roles with the Cherokee County Chamber of Commerce, Anna Crawford Child Advocacy Board, Cherokee County United Way, Canton Rotary Club, Service League of Cherokee County, Reinhardt College Alumni Association, Georgia Educational Advancement Council, Etowah Garden Club, Cherokee Arts Council, Cherokee County Historical Society, Funk Heritage Center, Arts Leadership League of Georgia, Cherokee County Sheriff's Foundation, Leadership Cherokee and Leadership Georgia. I'm sure we left some out. And whereas Jo Ellen still found time in her schedule, even with twin sons, to seek to serve Canton as an elected official. And whereas Jo Ellen faithfully served as member of this Canton City Council from nineteen ninety to two thousand and nine. And whereas Jo Ellen decided she still had more leadership in her tank after retirement and is currently served on the city council since twenty sixteen. Whereas Jo Ellen lights up every room she enters, never meets a stranger, and always remembers the importance of treating people with kindness and acceptance and respect. Whereas Jo Ellen enjoys many things about Canton, but specifically our park system, which sits in her own backyard. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Bill Grant, Mayor of the City of Canton, Georgia, in agreement with our colleagues on the Canton City Council and all of Team Canton, hereby declare Saturday, July thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, as Jo Ellen Wilson Day in the City of Canton to recognize her eightieth birthday. In recognition in recognition of this milestone and in admiration for our friend, the mayor, city council, and city staff are purchasing a bench in her honor to be placed on the new Etowah River Trail connector between Bowling and Heritage Park as soon as the project is complete, the very first one. So may we all have friends as lovely and special as everyone everyone's favorite, Joe. So if you would join me down front for this proclamation. Cupcakes in honor of you, and we just appreciate everything that you do and your team behind you. Good doing that.
Okay, everybody, have a cupcake.
Just a moment, we just a moment before we begin our. Anyone wants to come up and enjoy a cupcake in in honor of Jo Ellen? Long someone bring us up one up here, so. So we'll move on. We have two public hearings tonight. Ms. Wilson did want me to to tell you that those cupcakes were not pub purchased with taxpayer funds. And in that spirit, our first public hearing is discussion and possible action on the twenty twenty-two millage rate. Mr. Peppers and Ms. Forrester.
I'm going to let Ms. Forrester handle the first part of this, and then I'll have a couple of comments afterwards.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This is our third and final public hearing on the millage rate. We will be asking for a motion to approve the twenty twenty-two millage rate at five point four percent. So we'll go through the same presentation you've already seen. But for anyone that's new to the topic, this first slide indicates our digest over time. It's important to note that the current year, twenty twenty-two, per the Cherokee County Tax Assessor's Office, seventy-five percent of the increase in Canton's digest is a result of inflation. Just twenty-five percent of the increase is a product of new construction. This is Canton's millage rate over time. We're hoping you'll consider five point four as we have done for the last five years, making the sixth year at five point four millage. How we advertise the millage rate? One thing that seems to cause concern in the public sometimes is that first sentence in blue on the notice of the property tax increase, where it says, we are increasing property taxes by twenty point forty-three percent. Even though we're holding the millage rate steady, that calculation is determined by the Georgia Department of Revenue based on a form and formulas dependent upon the tax assessor's values. So I don't like the twenty point four forty-three percent calculation, but that's what they tell us it has to be, based on the assessments and holding our millage rate steady at five point four percent. If we did not have that property tax increase, we would have to implement a rollback rate. That rollback rate would be four point four eight four percent. And the rollback rate is to account for inflation that exists that is on existing property values in the digest. So if you saw property tax increase per the assessor, which there's a ninety-three percent chance that you did, then you will see a property tax increase, even though we're maintaining the five point four millage rate. However, it's possible that you may be one of the six hundred and three homes that saw no increase this year or one of the one hundred and eighty-eight homes that saw a decrease in value. So not everyone is guaranteed that twenty point forty-three percent increase. How does this affect the average homeowner that occupies their home? The average home price is determined to be three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. At the five point four millage rate, your tax bill to the city of Canton would be eight hundred and ten dollars. If you had the senior exemption on the same home, three hundred and seventy-five thousand, at a five point four millage rate, your tax payment to the city of Canton would be two hundred and five dollars. That's for the year. Some significant notes related to the current year's activity. There's over ten thou-- well, there is ten thousand two hundred and four residential properties within the city. Of these, nearly three thousand qualify for the senior exemption. And that senior exemption is saving seniors in the city one point seven million dollars in taxes. On the flip side of that, that means that's one point seven million the city is not collecting from the seniors. We have to make that up in other methods. More than seventy-eight percent of seniors own properties that receive the full one hundred and twelve thousand dollar senior exemption. And out of our millage rate that we collect each year, a portion of that is predetermined to go to the county as a fire district tax, and it has been approved at the two point nine eight four mills. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Just a couple of comments. We did, I had an email earlier this week from an individual who was talking about the 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 senior tax exemption and the and the cost of 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 taxes to an individual who is now beyond the exemption. And I gave a an example back to the individual about a similar property in an incorporated Cherokee County. So if you were a senior in an incorporated Cherokee County, according to the tax values at at a four hundred thousand dollar home, for instance, you were paying somewhere around twelve hundred dollars in property taxes for your county M and O tax, your fire district tax, and the parks bond. If you lived in the city in a similar priced home, you paid only nine hundred dollars in property tax for your city taxes, which includes your fire district tax, your county tax, and your park bond. And so even even those seniors who have fully fully experienced the city's tax exemption may see an increase in their taxes if their value went up. They are likely paying less than their counterparts in an incorporated Cherokee County, and they get the benefit of a hundred percent of the city services that that individual outside the city limits does not get. So it's still a very good value proposition for our residents, even with the inflation that occurred in the last assessment. We don't assess property. All we can do is the city is set the millage rate. The assessment is a function of the county, and it is set apart by state through statutes. We don't control that. We don't control the appeals process, but what we do control is that tax rate. And as a city, we have proposed to you, as our elected officials, to continue holding that tax rate steady for the sixth year at five point four. That five point four millage rate remains the lowest millage rate of any city in Cherokee County when you add in fire services. And so again, it's still a great value to live in Canton. If you're a senior, it's an even better value to live in Canton. So I just wanted to make that comment.
Ms. Peppers?
Mayor, on behalf of all the seniors, as you heard, I want to thank you for the senior exemption.
We need to have the open the public hearing first, so. So at this point, we'll open the public hearing. We have no one signed up in favor or opposition. We'll close the public hearing and open it to council. Ms. Wilson? So again, I I don't want to be a broken record on this, but as Ms. Pepper says, we don't control assessments. But the only thing we can control is the the millage rate. And holding it five point four with all the other things you'll hear in the next public hearing, the things proposed, next fiscal year budget, all the things that we're doing and and plan to do in our roadmap. The projects are, I think, very impressive and still holding the millage rate that low. I think we looked last year, the year before, Mr. Ingram. We looked back and we knew it was five point four was the lowest in twenty-five years. I think we went back, but went back even further, and it was the lowest in the city's history we could find. So since it's been recorded. So I think we're all very proud of that. And I want to thank our financial team and our 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 team. And again, I want to thank council for their hard work in in their being responsible with the taxpayer funds to be able to do this. And in addition to all of that, again, the city has zero debt obligations. So I think it's an ambial position to be in. So. Further questions, comments?
If we could, at our last, one of the last two public meetings, public hearings, Ms. Forrester and Mr. Peppers discussed the the rationale behind not following the rollback because of cost of things going up, as well as be able to offset the the loss from the senior exemption. Could you take a moment to address that for anybody new?
Sure. So the the state formula on rollback is really, the thought process behind it is, you're doing the same amount of services with the same amount of revenue from the prior prior year. So they they provide a a formula that's that's created by the State Department of Revenue that basically takes in what you brought in in taxes last year and determines what the rate would be for you to keep that same amount of taxes coming into the city for the current year. A couple of issues with that. One of the issues with that is you're you're charged with adopting a millage rate and still appeals processes that are going on. The second thing is, as as with most people in their own personal lives, there's very few things that cost the same today as cost on July twenty-first of two thousand and twenty-one. Most things have gone up in price. And so the logic behind being able to do the same amount of work and provide the same level of service for the same dollar that you had last year really just doesn't work. But that is the state's law as it relates to property tax advertisements. It's their law as it relates to rollbacks. What's really interesting about it is the state of Georgia doesn't have to follow that same law because they collect taxes out of your paycheck and through other other various forms. But they have decided to hold counties and cities accountable to that rollback statement because that's something that they could control. And unfortunately, I go back to the fact, the only thing the city controlled in that in that particular process is the millage rate. We don't get to handle the assessments, and we don't get to handle the appeals. So. That's my two cents on that.
Any further discussion, questions? Charlie?
Any magic language we need on this? Move to approve the millage, twenty twenty-two millage rate to be set at five point four mills? As proposed?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Oppose say nay. All members voted for the motion. Move it along to the second public hearing. Public hearing on fiscal year twenty twenty-three budget and fee schedule. Again, Ms. Forrester and Mr. Peppers? This is our first public, is our public hearing on the the proposed twenty twenty-three budget, so.
And this this is a little bit different presentation than what we typically get accustomed to. We wanted to focus on telling a story about the budget instead of just throwing up a bunch of numbers because generally, our numbers haven't changed significantly. In fact, they've gone down on a few items. So we're going to run through an introduction of why we do this, what our goals and objectives have been, and then we'll show you some numbers at the end. Starting out, budget timeline, while we're here today, this really started back in February, and you could say earlier with our roadmap. Every year, the city is trying to have a planning session, which is generally held in February. By April, we've communicated that to the city department heads, and they've responded with their requests for project costs and salary adjustments and miscellaneous supplies. By May, the tax assessors provided us the initial digest, and we start holding meetings with elected officials to tell us or to inform each other, really, on the direction we're going to take and the amount of money we anticipate. By June, we're putting all the final touches on the budget, and here we are in July with our public hearings for the millage rate and. August first, we need to get this information to the county tax commissioner so she can start preparing the bills. And August first, we start the implementation of the budget. So why do we have a budget? Because it's good business practice, but ultimately because it's the law. Georgia code says all cities are required to have a balanced budget for general funds, special revenue funds, and capital project funds. It is optional that we have a balanced budget for our enterprise and our fiduciary funds. And now our city manager is going to cover some of our focus in this.
Thank you very much. What we've tried to do this year is is what we've tried to do the last couple of years, is make sure we're integrating our roadmap for success and the things that our citizens have asked for into the budget process. And so what I've got before you right now is basically breaking down our budget by each of our tenants to show you exactly what it is we're working on specific to those. It's not an exhaustive list, but this is pretty much the 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 high mark items for each of these. So in creating great neighborhoods, some of the things we're working on, of course, we have a brand-new urban development and housing department that's staffed by our new Housing Initiatives Director, Mr. Ken Patton. That shows up in the budget this year. We will continue working on the housing needs assessment that was started earlier this year, but we're holding off on that census data, so that's going to carry forward into the next fiscal year. We are working on an application for the Georgia Initiative for Community Housing to be a a a community in that program. If we're accepted in that, we've earmarked some funds specifically for that. We have a two point eight million dollar loan guarantee to the Canton Housing Authority for their RAD conversion application for Ship Street and Jefferson Circle, which includes that purchase option for the city on Jefferson Circle property. We have funds earmarked for Laurel Canyon for innovative housing projects specific to that site that we're working on the designs now, and included some construction funding in the budget for that as well. And then we're working on updating our design guidelines at the city level. On celebrating the diversity in our community, we will continue funding translation services throughout the city in our communication and outreach. We have centralized a stipend for bilingual staff. That used to be handled at the departmental level, but we've pulled all that into one location. And we're also going to be adding an advanced certification program to that. Funds in there for arts at Sunnyside. Funds in there for business programs through our Economic Development Group for our minority-owned businesses. Increased training. Increased training for staff, elected officials, and boards. And then also increased special event offerings throughout the city that bring about more diversity in those offerings. On advancing regional economic success, we have the creation of a new Canton tourism website that'll roll out this year. We have increased funds for Canton tourism so that they can have a bigger reach. There's funding for an arts master plan. We have a continued funding for our Connect Canton program with the Chamber of Commerce where we pay for their first-year membership for new businesses in the chamber. There's funding in there for business assistance workshops. We continue our partnership with the Cherokee Office of Economic Development that we've had for many years. Planning in there for the area around what we're calling Lake Canton, which is the reservoir and that surrounding property. Increased and improved special event offerings. Again, we're streamlining some organizational structures within the city around economic development. And then there's also some funding in there for business incubation and acceleration programs. On enhancing historic downtown, there'll be the initiation of the tax allocation district, so you'll see that show up in the budget. This will be the first year those funds will be recognized. New downtown housing assisted with the TAD. We have some projects that are looking at that. The DDA's use of Jones Building proceeds when that sale closes in August for additional downtown projects. Some planning around that North Street corridor as it relates to projects in that area. We're going to continue our planning at West Main Street in that corridor, which connects the mill and downtown. We're working on a grant right now for railroad pedestrian crossing project that we've included some funding in here for. Increased small business outreach. Continued special event offerings. Moving towards a dedicated downtown staff for landscape and maintenance. And then also improve downtown sanitation offerings. On sustaining our natural environment, some of the programs we have, we have our first year with our solar array at our parking deck. So we'll see how that impacts the budget as we're offsetting our electric costs here at City Hall with some of that benefit from solar. It will also be our first year of electric vehicle charging stations at the parking deck. Our hope, once we get that in, is to lease the city's first electric vehicle under our capital lease program, so we're working on that as well. HVAC improvements at our facilities, which we talked about at our last meeting with Schneider. Roof repairs at some of our municipal buildings to make them more energy efficient. We're updating the plant pallet on our design side. We'll have sanitation improvements through our new contract with Waste Pro. There's various stormwater projects that'll go on throughout the city. And then we'll also be moving forward with applications for the Atlanta Regional Commission's Green Communities Initiative and also becoming a B city so that we can get more jars of rent honey at council meetings next year. Connecting citizens to parks and recreation. You'll note on here a couple of slides that say 2024 SPOLOST. One of the things that we have proposed in the language for the SPOLOST, which we did in the last SPOLOST, is to allow us to use debt service as one of the categories for spending within the SPOLOST. What that does is it allows us, if the voters do approve the SPOLOST in November, to go ahead and kickstart those projects and then pay ourselves back for anything that we spend money prior to the collection of those dollars. So some specific highlights. Dog park is the thing that we've heard the most of from our residents, so it's kind of top of our list. Hoping the SPOLOST gets approved in November, we can start kickstarting the design of that. We will complete the Etowah River Trail westward connector between Bowling and Heritage Park, and everybody can take a seat on the Joel and Wilson bench while they're walking that area. We'll start the design and construction of a new West Side pedestrian bridge. We're pending the award from the Appalachian Regional Commission on that. We'll move forward, again, with completing those Harmon Park improvements. Heritage Park restrooms and playgrounds, we've allocated some funds for those just because we're getting close to the end of the fiscal year and we're, you know. We think we'll have the restrooms done, but the playground may overlap that fiscal year period. We've included some funds post-approval of the referendum for Jefferson Circle and some park planning in that area, also to include Burge Park, depending on that agreement with the housing authority on their parcels over there. Planning for the new parkland that we have in South Canton. Once we get a dog park, then we need to plan the area at Jennifer Street, which currently serves as a dog park for another use. We've increased our supplement to the library in the budget. And then also working on some plans for a community and cultural arts center, which of course would be a SPOLOST-funded project. On improving infrastructure for future demands, we will continue our design work on State Route 140. Improvements in North Canton from Marietta Highway, Riverstone, up to Laurel Canyon. We will continue lobbying for the traffic signal at Reservoir Drive and Reinhardt College Parkway. Another good reason to have that language in the referendum on the SPOLOST is if we can get some movement on that, then we can go ahead and pre-fund that project, even though those SPOLOST dollars might not come in until 2024. We will continue our local street resurfacing program that we do every year. Continue our work at the water pollution control plant because it's going to take us another couple of years to finish that project. The flocculators and intake screens replacement project will take place, and you will be glad to know that flocculator is not underlined on any of Microsoft's programs. It recognizes that word. Water tank projects at the industrial park and also looking at a water tank replacement project in South Canton. We will be completing our transportation master plan somewhere around the November-December timeframe, as you heard at our last meeting. We'll be reviewing and applying for additional grants as a city through the bipartisan infrastructure law legislation that was done at the federal level. As those things come out, we want to be able to jump onto those. And then also increasing wayfinding signage throughout the city. And then lastly, on leading with excellence, we'll be using, of course, our roadmap to help determine the projects and program funding as we move forward, like we have been doing. We've budgeted based upon having the lowest millage rate, again, in Cherokee County. We're increasing professional pay for our professional staff. We're announcing that using the budget, we're raising the starting rate for all pay in the city to at least $20 an hour. We're also implementing a new true step and grade plan in our police department. We're not aware of anybody else in the county that does that, so we think that's a great move for us so we can remain competitive on that side. We have centralized tuition reimbursement. Historically, that's been placed within various departments, but we've centralized that into one line item in the budget so that it's more carefully reviewed citywide. We have a replacement program for sidearms with our police department that we'll be using impact fee funds for as we're replacing some units that are currently out there that are aging. We've adjusted some of the budget areas in the city to centralize certain services. So an example of that is right now, in prior years, certain types of insurance have been spread across all departments. What you'll find in this year's budget is a lot of that information is centralized under administration. So for instance, the retirement plan. In the council budget, for instance, our current council doesn't get a retirement plan, but it has historically been budgeted to pay for former retirement in the council's budget. We've removed that, and we've put all of that retirement under administration. So we've done a few things like that. Additionally, the budget does not include any new positions. Our goal is to keep a well-trained staff and work with the folks that we have and help them move along in their careers and do a better job for Team Canton. And I'm going to turn it back over to Ms. Forrester.
So this slide shows you how we're paying for all those projects that the city manager just covered. I think it's important to note the bottom number on each of those tables on the right-hand column, the percentage change. And you'll notice for the general fund, the general fund went up only 8.5%, whereas the accumulated funds of all the other groups went down 14.85%. And that's with completing the projects that are scheduled that have been discussed. If you want to review a few changes on the general fund side, as Billy mentioned, you'll see that the mayor and council function did decrease by a little over 36%. And that's largely to do with removing the GMV's retirement cost and the cost of general liability insurance. That has been shifted down to general administration. You'll see municipal court is also decreased. And that is associated with a decline in revenues as well. Administration has increased a little over 24%. And that is by combining other functions, admin, which includes the city manager's office, the finance department, all your accounts payable, your payroll functions, human resources, your IT department, communications, that service all the city functions and all city departments. That also includes your building and maintenance for facilities at the police department, public works, and city hall. Another increase you may notice is a difference in the community development and tourism department. And that is largely because we have closed the housing fund, which you'll notice on the table on the right, and assumed those roles and responsibilities in the general fund. We also have a change in transfers and contingencies. But really, on the whole, that hasn't increased significantly over the previous year. It's just because that amount is relatively small. Any change shows up as a significant change. On the other funds table, which is the table on the right, you'll see that the ARPA fund is declining this year. This is the final year. We did receive our second tranche of funds this week, so we'll be utilizing them this fiscal, the current fiscal year, 2022, and again in 2023. As I mentioned, we had closed the housing fund, and you'll notice a significant difference in the sanitation fund. That is because the city will no longer bill for garbage services and pay for the removal of the garbage in the new fiscal year. Instead, those items will be charged directly by the service provider. How do all those numbers look in one big picture? You'll see that the orange piece of this pie is water and sewer fund expenditures. Out of all the revenues that come in and all the activities and programs that the city participates in and supports, water and sewer is our largest piece of the pie. That navy piece of the pie, that's the general fund. And the other items are miscellaneous SPOLOST, impact fees, sanitation, stormwater, rental car tax, and hotel motel tax. So focusing on the blue piece of that pie, the general fund, we'll go into that a little bit deeper because that's what piques most people's curiosity. Looking at just general fund expenditures, you'll see that purple part of the donut, that is the public safety piece of our budget. That's where most of the city's money goes to in the general fund. That is our police and fire services. Next, would-be admin. As I mentioned before, that combines several functions that are distributed and that service citywide, different funds, different departments. And you'll see that the community development and tourism piece of that donut is rather large because we've had a desire to focus on housing, tourism, permitting, and building inspections. The orange piece of that donut, that's your public works. That's mostly, largely, your street department and some maintenance. And some of the smaller pieces, which may or may not be where we're focusing all of our roadmap on, but in the next fiscal year, you'll see, include municipal court and arts and parks program. To fund all this activity, we look at our inflows, and those are our revenue sources. You'll see we're not anticipating a significant increase in most items, but we can review some of the changes. There's an increase in property taxes that's largely due to inflation. A significant decrease in miscellaneous items, but there again, it's because other taxes, principal and interest is only budgeted to be $12,000. So much movement is going to show as a significant increase or decrease. Charges for services are down. That is because some of our departments are estimating a decline or a slowing in the economy, which may or may not come to fruition. We have an increase in fines and forfeitures. As a reminder, that's largely to do with red speed and our school zone cameras. Other items, they're really small altogether. And if you had any questions later on, I'll be glad to answer those. The next slide is a picture of the inflows for the general fund, so you can see where a majority of the revenues come if you're not in favor so much of the black and white numbers. So you'll see property taxes is the largest piece of the donut. Franchise taxes, which is something that we reviewed a couple of meetings ago. Those are your taxes or fees from your utility companies, your sanitation, gas, water, electric, cable. Other business taxes, those have to do with business licensing and insurance, occupation taxes, financial institution taxes. Those are your banks. In summary, this slide shows you how the fund balance has been budgeted and used during the last 10 years. Green shows that we plan to draw from reserves if necessary. And blue shows what we've actually withdrawn. And you may ask, why did we have to only withdraw funds in those two years and not the others? Some people think that's a good thing. Some people think, well, why are you putting the reserves in the budget each year? Well, we put those reserves in the budget because that's a plan. And as everyone knows, everything doesn't go as planned. Sometimes our revenues come in higher, which is great. Sometimes our expenses come in lower, which is also good. You'll see that's the case in eight out of 10 years. Why are some of the, what are some of the reasons why expenses would be less than we anticipate? Because we budget for positions that don't get filled. Or we may plan for projects that get delayed. Or we plan to acquire some assets like vehicles, and there aren't any. This is another description of our fund balance, covering 10 years of activity through fiscal year 2021. Those are all audited numbers, so those are factual. The last two numbers on the tail end there will show you what the fund balance is anticipated at the end of the current fiscal year, 2022, and at the end of the fiscal 2023 budget year. And that'll show you that we're not accumulating a lot of money. We're using what we have, but we are still keeping a cushion as advised. The Government Finance Officers Association recommends at least two months of operating expenses in reserves. And with our budget, we intend to have about three months of operating expenses in reserves after implementing this current budget. I hope you will agree with me that this presentation shows that we have elected officials and city staff that likes to get a lot of work done while being as efficient as possible. I'll be happy to answer any questions at the end of the public hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Forrester. At this point, we will open up the public hearing. One citizen signed up to speak, Mr. Thomas Weaver. But I believe I saw him leave. Okay. Okay. So we have no one signed up to speak then, so we will close the public hearing and open it up for discussion among council. Just briefly, I want to say it's exciting, a lot of these projects that were in the roadmap included in this year's budget. It's so exciting to see. We discussed some of them for two years, and it's exciting to see so many of them on this list. So I want to thank council for pushing those for the past one or two years and thank our staff for getting those into the budget. I want to ask that the overview is excellent information. Is that on the website or is it going to be on the city website? That'd be great. So it'd be great for our citizens. I did want to reinforce that the planning for the dog park is on there. So for the citizens that are watching or listening, it's great to see that on there. I did have one question on the rental car. It was. one question on the rental car. It was taxes, it was, I think, projected to decrease by 7%. I was just curious as to why.
Generally, the rental car tax is one of our smaller special funds that comes in, and it really is hit or miss on where it is every year. We've budgeted, we've looked at revenues one year, and we've budgeted a little bit higher the next year based on what we thought it would be, and some years it's coming under budget. So generally speaking, we try to be very conservative with that one, and I think our data over the last six or seven months has led us to believe that that might be a little bit lower. Also, there's very few businesses in the city that collect that, so if one leaves the city or if one ceases to operate, that really impacts that rental car fund.
Great. Thank you.
I just wanted to thank Ms. Forrester and Mr. Ingram and Mr. Peppers for putting the budget into words. I mean, words are better. But, and then also, I just wanted to share that I recently hit a parked car and did my part to participate in putting funds into the rental car.
Yes, and thanks for the entire team's work on the budget, including our department heads. I know that's a lot of work, and I know how budgets used to be approached in the city, and I really appreciate the discipline and the work that everyone puts into it. Yeah, there's no action tonight. This is just our first public hearing, so we'll have more time to ask questions and delve into it further, but anything else?
Thank you. In the milage, we talked about not adding anymore, well, you talked about not adding any more staff. Is the police department fully staffed now?
It is not. I think at last count, we were about seven vacancies.
And why was that not included?
Because those positions are already budgeted for, even though they're vacant. There was not a request for any additional positions.
Any new positions that are not on the papers right now?
That's correct.
I understand. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay. Thank you. We'll move into our regular business meeting. You have in your packet minutes from two meetings, a special called council meeting, the draft minutes from July 7th, and the council meeting draft minutes from July 7th as well. Any changes, revisions, or motions?
I'll move to approve the minutes.
Second.
Motion approved in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. All members voted for the motion. We have one informational item this evening, the 2022 second quarter uniform crime report in criminal investigation division case status report. Mr. Chief Mariffel, Mr. Chief Mariffel. Get two titles tonight, chief.
Good evening again, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
So this is the second quarter UCR crime report. Our violent crime for part ones is up 100% from 22 incidents at this time last year to 44. As we discussed, I think it was a couple of months ago when I did the first quarter, the biggest increase we're seeing on that is the aggravated assault, hands, fists, feet. And again, as I talked about last time, that's because of the new law going with strangulation and being a felony. And I think if you'll actually look way down to the simple assaults, you'll see they're down 29% because before that law went into effect and before the training our officers took, when we went on those family violence cases, those might have been a simple battery or simple assault. Now they're being listed as aggravated assault, rightfully so. And again, the district attorney's office conducting the training with our officers and our detectives has helped them identify how to handle these cases, and that's what's increased the cases, which is the way they should be handled and probably should have been handled before the new law. Because, as you can imagine, anytime some human being puts their hands around someone else's throat in anger, it can end tragically. And prior to that strangulation law going in, as I said, it would have been a misdemeanor. We would get on the scene. One of the parties would say that they grabbed me by the throat. There might be some marks on there, and it would be a misdemeanor or a simple battery or a simple assault. So I think it's rightfully so that our legislature, and I'm sure our prosecutors got behind that, to turn that into a felony and a strangulation charge. On our property crimes, our property crimes are down, total property crimes are down 7%, which gives us a total for our part one crimes of plus 3% for the second quarter and for this time of the year. And also, Mr. Carlin had asked, when I did the first quarter, for me to discuss our CID, our criminal investigation division, how cases are assigned and what the closure rate is on that. And actually, Sergeant Hamilton, our criminal investigation division sergeant, who did this memorandum is here tonight also. But so if you see it, he went back a couple of years to 2020. You see that cases assigned are 375, 137 inactivated. This is in 2020. Inactivated means that there's no leads to it, that someone comes home and the lawnmower's gone. There's no video. There's no fingerprints. There's nothing to do on it. There's nothing that we can do. Some cases, we investigate until we get to a point where there is no investigative leads. We've investigated to the, it's not going any further. Again, a lot of those cases come in, and because of manpower and how much time you can spend on crimes, if there is no investigative leads immediately, they may be inactivated. Obviously, the more serious crimes, even if there are no investigative leads, those are assigned out and are investigated until we can get to no leads. At the end of 2020, there were only three active cases that carried on to 21. In 2020, we cleared, I'm sorry, we cleared by arrest 100 of those cases of the 375. We closed 106. 100, I'm sorry, closed means that we get dispatched to a death case that ends up being, most times being a natural death case. When we get dispatched, there's a case initiated, and all those are sent to detectives. But once the medical examiner comes back or the coroner rules that it's natural, then it's closed out. Overdoses, once it's decided that it's an overdose, it's not, there's no prosecution to it, then it will be closed out. And then another great number of those are turned over to other jurisdictions. We classify that as closed because we get a lot of credit cards, frauds, or just fraud in general, that we take the initial report, we turn it over to investigator to find out that it didn't occur in our jurisdiction. It occurred someplace. And so we will then turn it over to the other jurisdictions. So that's what closed fines. And then unfounded is just what it says. We investigated and the crime didn't occur. And a lot of times we'll have victims come in and say that it didn't occur. So for 2020 closure rate, it's 62.67. That's if you take all those other reasons away from the total cases that we actually closed is a 62.67%. It's hard to say if you say, well, what's an average? What's a good national average? It's hard to say that because it's apples and oranges of how jurisdictions determine what's inactive, what's closed, what's this. Some jurisdictions assist themselves with stats as far as what's inactivated or what's closed. We try and be very, very sure. We meet constantly with our criminal investigation division to make sure that what we're saying is true, that nobody's making something look like something's closed when it's really not closed. So it's just difficult when you talk about nationally. I don't, what New York PD might say is inactivated, I don't know what we would say. What Atlanta PD might say is inactivated, I don't know. So it's really hard to say, where do you stand nationally? So if you take that same forward, you'll see in 2021, and you'll notice that the cases are pretty much the same. 375, we went to 384. Our closure rate was 64.84% once everything was taken out of it. And then 2021, 164 cases, and closure rate was at 46, and that's because we haven't, some of those cases, I think in 2021, there was 36 that are still active that will carry over. Those cases are still being investigated and still being looked at. So you're going to see that closure rate go on as that 36 active dwindles down closer to what the average has been of about five to 10 that we take forward. So, Mr. Carlin or council mayor?
That was fantastic. Exactly what we were looking for, and I had no doubt that we'd be able to get those numbers together. So appreciate you and folks who worked on it. That helps a ton. Thank you.
Thank you, chief, for that information. Any other questions, comments for the chief? Thank you, chief.
Thank you, mayor. Thank you.
Appreciate you. No one signed up for public input this evening, so we'll move on to old business. Item A, discussion and possible action on cases RZON 2203-002 and CUP 2204-001, rezoning and conditional use permit request for 830 and 850 Marietta Road. Mr. Green?
I'm here, members of council. As you may recall, this item was on the June action meeting, and it was asked to be postponed to take care of some issues that had been discovered on the property. I have written out to the property, and a lot of those issues, if not all of them, have been addressed. There were some racks of shoes, sporting equipment that was almost on every porch riding through there today. Those have all been removed. The dumpster area has been cleaned up, the areas of old mulch. They have been using that as a base and putting out new mulch on top of that. There was some other debris that had been stacked around some of the units. That's all been removed. There is, however, some new pallets that I discovered today in talking with Mr. Latimer this evening before the meeting started. He stated that those are scheduled to be removed. They take a large dumpster at one time. With all the rain that we've had, they've been a little leery about going to the dump. They don't want to get stuck in their tandem trailers. As you recall, this was a rezoning request for one property to be allowed, the multifamily duplexes. It came back as a CUP for the whole project after Mr. Latimer's discussion with HUD, and they had wanted or requested some quadplexes be out there. So that initiated the conditional use permit. The case still remains the same. The staff does recommend approval of both of these applications with two specific conditions. One of them is the applicant shall install a six-foot privacy fence along the southern property line. The decorative side of the fence shall face towards the property line of 870 Marietta Road. A row of evergreen shrubs, Leland Cypress or Arboretum, shall be planted on the inside of the privacy fence. These plantings shall be six feet in height at time of planting and be installed on six-foot centers. The owner developer shall install one transit stop as required by the overlay zone community standards ordinance. I have spoken with Mr. Latimer, and he is in agreement with both of these conditions. I also believe one of the questions may have come up about some of the existing residences, the two single-family homes. 830, I rode out there today, and it appears to be empty and abandoned. 850, the residents are still there, but the interior of the structure has been renovated. I think Wes said 2010, 2011. So when that particular structure goes under renovation to convert it to a duplex, all that will need to be done is exterior work. And Mr. Latimer believes that those people that are renting there now can remain in place while the structure is being refurbished and upgraded.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Green. Any question, comments?
Yeah, I have some comments, mayor.
Ms. Tolan?
Thank you, Mr. Green. Appreciate all that. And thank you for the, thanks to the applicant for being patient. We did push this off a little bit because there were some questions. Some of those questions were around code compliance, and I think we generally wanted to get a better understanding of what to expect going forward. So, you know, proof is in the pudding, and it looks like that they've addressed it. And frankly, it sounds like they have a history of addressing these issues. So I'm really thrilled about that. I'm also thrilled that this opportunity, this project adds to our affordable housing stock, and I also appreciate the fact that the applicant could have moved forward with the 12 duplexes, but based on some guidance from HUD had chosen to kind of pull back and make some changes that include a combination of duplexes and quadplexes. So I think that, you know, all of that spells out the fact that, you know, we've got a good product that's going to be delivered, and a lot of folks that are in need now will be served. So with that in mind, I would like to make a motion that we approve the rezoning and conditional use permit request for 830 and 850 Marietta Road.
Okay. We probably needed to vote on this separately, or can we vote on them together?
We can do it all together. I know we've done them separately, but I don't think it matters.
Okay. Or you said we needed them separate. No, okay, we have a motion. Yes, do you want to include the conditions as recommended by?
Oh, yeah, and the two conditions as recommended by staff.
Okay.
Yes, thank you. Second.
Motion and a second to approve the rezoning and conditional use permit for the two conditions recommended by staff. Further discussion, questions? Mr. Carlin?
Just want to make a note because I made the note two weeks ago. We talked about the need, was there a need for traffic studies and things like that? Traffic had been raised as an issue from some citizens. It's my understanding from our conversations offline, other studies have been done around this project, and the size and impact of this project itself did not warrant an additional traffic study outside of the ones that have already been done. Is that correct?
That is my understanding from Ms. Watson.
There you go.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Watson. I appreciate that. Just wanted to make sure we followed up on that issue.
It's also my understanding, you know, the residents in the neighborhood adjacent to the project, you know, raised several concerns. It's my understanding that all those primarily have been addressed by Mr. Latimer and his team. And I want to thank him for working with the residents in the neighborhood and, again, being responsible. I think he's a big stakeholder in the Sunnyside community and appreciate his assistance in that area. So further questions, comments? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay.
Nay.
We have the motion passes with one nay and the rest in favor. So, okay, item B, discussion and possible action on the ward of Harmon Park improvement projects to Triscapes in the amount of $4,328,732 and 7 cents. Ms. Watson?
Thank you. This is for the Harmon Park Improvement Project to Triscapes. Just as a reminder, this project will include construction of a 10 to 11-foot wide multi-use concrete trail, sidewalk improvements, additional parking, full-size basketball court, mini-pitch soccer field, stadium-style seating, replacing the fencing on the existing baseball fields, construction of a prefabricated picnic pavilion, and additional items. Staff does recommend approval of the contract with Triscapes in the amount of $4,328,732 and 7 cents. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. And just to confirm, this cost would be covered by splosts and impact fees?
Yes, sir.
Correct. Okay. Comments, questions?
I guess I'd like to make some more comments here if I may.
Mr. Tolan? Go right ahead.
This has been a project that we've talked about for a long time. It's located in a community that's underserved, and what we're proposing is a world-class park. Based on what Ms. Watson just laid out, it's going to be a very, very nice park, and I think a park that those folks and the entire city can enjoy and be very proud of. It's a long time coming. These things don't happen overnight. I wish sometimes things would happen quicker, but, you know, it's a lot of money, and it's a little bit more, I think, than we were anticipating, but still, the end product is going to be something that we can all be extremely proud of. With that, I'm just going to go ahead and make a motion that we award the Harmon Park With that, I'm just going to go ahead and make a motion that we award the Harmon Park Improvement Project to Triscapes Inc. in the amount of $4,328,732.07. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Further comments, questions? Ms. McGrew?
Thank you. I'll ask my question, and then the staff can decide who should answer it. But for the sake of the public, who might not understand where impact fees come from, would one of you three, Ms. Forster, Mr. Ingram, or Mr. Peppers, explain about where impact fees come from and how that's determined?
So impact fees were created in the city, and they follow a methodology. The methodology is based upon what new types of projects we will need over a period of years as a city. And so when new development comes in, there's an impact fee that is assessed on that property as it relates to transportation, public, sorry, transportation, police, fire, parks and recreation, and administration. And so we can only use Parks and Recreation impact fees for newly-done projects and expansion thereof, not renovation of existing. And so a majority of the work at Harmon Park is new recreational programming. So that's where we're using some impact fees on the project, but we'll also be utilizing SPOST fees for it as well.
So I would be correct in saying that taxpayer money, citizen of Canton, taxpayer, property tax money is not used?
That's correct. The only time we use taxpayer funds as it relates to a park such as Harmon is on the routine maintenance, which is covered under the general fund.
Absolutely. Thank you for clarifying that for the public.
I also wanted to reiterate somewhat Mr. Tolan said, how exciting it is to see this park. I think the oldest, one of our largest parks in the city, but I think the oldest one, and to see it refurbished and basically create a brand-new park with the facilities in the fields. It's also going to be the home to our new soccer pitch field. And with the tad and our efforts to revitalize Sunnyside, I think it's very exciting to start with Harmon Park and start with a project that will benefit our citizens first in the redevelopment that we're doing in that area, and especially the citizens in that community and that neighborhood. So it's exciting. And also I add that it's, you know, it's Harmon Park, but I think it's also kickstarting the trail on the other side of the river, which I think is exciting also, and the sidewalks, I think, are all the way around Harmon Circle. So it is more than the park, and I think it's going to make a major impact to the communities.
If I may, one thing that I haven't really mentioned to you guys is that there will be a connection to Marietta Road, too. So they're going to be upgrading the sidewalk there, in case, just for your information.
That's wonderful. Great. Awesome. Any further comments? Oh, Ms. Schmidt?
Just wanted to throw in that there's also going to be public art there.
Yes. Definitely. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All members voted for the motion. Item C, discussion and possible action in the Ward of Task Order 24 for the Harmon Park Improvement Project, Construction Management Services to Atkins in the amount of $26,000. Ms. Watson?
Yes, so this item is for Atkins to complete construction management services during the construction of Harmon Park. They are the design engineer for the Harmon Park Improvement Project. So this would just take us through the end of the project and then to be able to review the contractor's submittals and change orders, request for information, and then provide clarification on drawings and any proposed improvements as necessary if issues arise.
And this is based on the new price, the new construction price?
Yes, yes.
Questions, comments? Motion?
I make a motion to approve the Award of the Task Order 24 for the Improvement Project to Atkins in the amount of $26,000.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All members voted for the motion.
Thank you.
Item E, discussion and possible action of the 2024 Special Purpose Local Option Sales Tax SPOST Referendum, Intergovernmental Agreement, IGA, and projects. Mr. Peppers?
I'm actually going to cover the H2O Innovations Water and Sewer Operations Contract first, but I'm going to be down here for the next four or five hours.
I almost made it. I almost made it, so.
Tell me which order you would like.
Thank you, Mayor.
Rewind the tape. Okay, so let's go back one. Discussion and possible action to renew H2O Innovations Water and Sewer Operations Contract. Mr. Hatabian, but he's not here, so you're going to cover that.
Hatabian is not here.
Mr. Waterman was supposed to kick me, and he didn't, so it's his fault, so.
So I will cover this for him tonight. We mentioned this at our last meeting. H2O Innovation has been our partner operating our water and wastewater treatment facilities for a number of years now. We first utilized them as utility partners, and then they became OpTech, and now they're H2O Innovation. Their contract is a five-year contract. It does have some out clauses in that for the city, so it passes muster with the city attorney. The agreement basically sets the first-year rate at our current rate, so there's no increase for the first year. In years two, three, four, and five, there would be an annual rate increase to us of not less than 1%, nor more than, no more than, sorry, I can't remember if it was 4%. No more than 4%, and that would be adjusted based on the Consumer Price Index, but not less than 1%. There were some items listed in here as possible additions. Staff's recommendation is that we approve the base contract and that we will work over the next several months to determine if we need additional services to that and bring those to you at that time.
Thank you, Mr. Peppers. Questions, comments? Ms. Wilson?
I'm very happy to make the motion to approve the renewal of the H2O Innovative Water Operations Water and Sewer Operations Contract.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I do have one question.
Ms. Waterman?
The term in termination, it gives the term from October 22 to September 30, '27. But it says it may be renewed and renegotiated, but what happens if, is there any chance of it lapsing or continuing on, somewhat like an evergreen contract?
So generally, what we do specifically with this vendor is, as we get into the last year of the contract, we start negotiations early, and basically we remind ourselves we're at the end of the contract. Now, we are the oldest client that they have, and so they don't tend to forget either. Specific to this one, though, we do check every year, and part of what we do every year is, specifically to this one, is look at the rate based on their CPI. So it calls for us to basically meet every year to discuss that rate change. And so that's when we would review the contract at that meeting. It shouldn't fall through the cracks.
I believe there's also a one-year out clause, which.
There's actually.
Sixty days.
Sixty days, sixty days, so.
It's a 60-day out clause, but if you can imagine trying to hire people to run a water and wastewater base, I don't see us taking that route anytime soon.
That's what qualifies us. You know, we can't bind future councils for, you know, beyond a year for contracts. That makes it qualify, so.
But also, since water and sewers consider a proprietary function in the city, and it's actually not subject to the no binding, because it's not something you have to do.
Any further questions, comments? So a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All members voted for the motion. So now we will move to item E, discussion and possible action of 2024 Special Purpose Local Option Sales Tax SPOST Referendum, Intergovernmental Agreement, IGA, and projects. Mr. Peppers?
I spoke on this at our last meeting, and I did provide to you a memo earlier this week that basically outlined the staff recommendation for the funds. As you will recall, the city is receiving somewhere, let me get the exact number, $46 million. Where am I at here? Hold on, sorry. We will be receiving $46,368,92, which equates to 12.728%. What the agreement basically outlines is that this SPOST will be called for referendum this year. The county will call for it. The SPOST collections will begin in July of 2024. The total SPOST is estimated to be collected countywide at $438 million over that section. The county has outlined one Level 1 project, which is the Cherokee County Courthouse expansion of $74 million. That means that all of the remaining proceeds after that Level 1 project have to be agreed upon by the parties on how those revenues are split. Of that, the county will receive 65.27% of the remaining proceeds, which is $237,742,765. And Ball Ground will get a little over 1%. Canton gets 12.7%. Holly Springs at 6.5%. Mountain Park gets a flat rate, because they only have maybe three residents in Cherokee County. Their flat rate's $35,000. Normally, they're paid first. That way, they don't have to keep up with the accounting of that for the next five years. Nelson will get half a percent. City of Waleska gets 3.5, 3.55%. Woodstock gets 13.5%, so that's where you get your 100% at. After the proceeds are collected, any proceeds above what we've estimated in collection will be divided up based upon those percentages. The only difference to that is Mountain Park will receive 0.01% at that time. Their proceeds will come out of the county funds, moving forward with any excesses. Additionally, Cherokee County has agreed to do some joint transportation projects. And specifically in Canton, the two projects that they have highlighted are Marietta Highway improvements between Ridge Road and Univetter Road, Butterworth Road, as well as the work on Technology Ridge Parkway, which is that herd road extension that comes into Bluffs that we've already been working on. Those projects, as it relates to the city of Canton, they are contributing no less than $3.4 million into. Now, we will have to do a separate intergovernmental agreement with them on those projects, but we're not required to get that agreement done before the referendum. My goal is to have it done before the referendum, but that's not a requirement of this particular agreement. Of our $46 million, we have listed the following projects. $3 million for public safety technology, vehicles, equipment, facilities. $22 million for parks, recreation, and cultural amenities, property acquisition, property planning, property improvements, recreational and cultural facilities, all-related equipment. $7 million for general government buildings and equipment. $9,368,92, that's our catch-all for transportation. It includes roadway and sidewalk development, property acquisition, roadway and sidewalk improvements, including stormwater, planning projects, and multimodal transportation options, including all-related equipment. And $5 million for economic development, for property acquisition, equipment, and project assistance resulting in job creation. Additionally, there will be a line in there that says, "and any debt service and capital leases related to the projects listed above." The county has sent a draft of the intergovernmental agreement to me that includes the list that I've provided to you, filled in. If we're going to make any changes, we're going to need to do that tonight. All the other cities have approved their list, so we're next to last behind the county, which is not a bad place to be sometimes. But I do have that. My recommendation to the council would be that you approve an intergovernmental agreement that has these specific terms in it that were outlined in the memo. The reason why I would suggest doing it in that way is if there's any changes in the actual agreement, knowing that we've got seven mayors and the Board of Commissioners signing, but it's not a substantive change, we don't have to keep going back for approvals. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Peppers. And just for the record, I think that with the roadway projects, it brings the total to over $49, almost $50 million. Current SPOST that we're in, I think, was projected at $24 million total?
Four, and we anticipate we're going to be closer to 30 when we get the overages from the current SPOST, but this is an additional $20 million above that.
Anticipating and able to negotiate almost, you know, twice of that amount, so it's exciting. And, you know, we're already talking about projects and ways to spend it, so it's exciting, so. Any questions or comments on that? And I do believe, as Mr. Peppers said, that the county is going to vote on that in their first meeting in August. So this is our last meeting in July, so that's the time crunches. That's the reason, so. Comments, questions? Ms. Schmidt?
I'll go ahead and move to approve the terms listed in the IGA and to authorize the mayor to execute an agreement with those terms.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All members voted for the motion. We had two old-business items added to the agenda. Item F, zoning condition clarification for 591 Jackie Moore Lane.
Mr. Mayor and council, the applicant or the developer of the project at 591 Jackie Moore Lane, which is multifamily, did reach out to the city. Their legal counsel specifically wanted some clarification as it relates to a condition. There was a condition placed on the CUP back in December of 2019, and I'm going to read you that. Jackie Moore Lane shall be improved to the city of Canton-required street standards, including realignment of Jackie Moore Lane intersection with Marietta Road. The question from legal counsel for the applicant, the developer, is, was it the anticipation that that meant that they would do work only within the existing right-of-way? Or was it the anticipation of the council that we expected them to acquire additional right-of-way or that we would be acquiring additional right-of-way on their behalf to make those improvements? The staff position on this has been, no, we think it's within the existing right-of-way. That's standard to what we do as a city. But they weren't necessarily happy with just our staff comments on that. They didn't want to be held to another standard after closing. And so I said I would bring it to council so that you could let me know what your thoughts were on that particular condition, and we could get back to them.
I assume Mr. Dyer has weighed in on this?
Well, the only thing I would add to that is they attempted to buy property from a property owners that they would need to, and they can't. So then they came to the city and said, well, would you condemn it? And we don't want to condemn it for that, so they just need, and so rather than come back and go through a rezoning process, we're just thinking interpretation of the language is the, they're satisfied with that.
Right. And we're confident that they can make the improvements they would need within our right-of-way?
They will be able to make some improvements within the right-of-way. It's not going to be a clear realignment of the whole intersection. Aside from them, there's only one other parcel that uses this intersection, and they're building a whole new entrance at another location. So, you know, in speaking with Ms. Watson on the engineering side, we feel confident that they can make some improvements within the existing right-of-way that will be beneficial to both them and the adjacent property owner. We don't really see the need for them to go outside of that right-of-way.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Carlin?
If they, if we do go forward, clarification is recommended, and they determine that they do feel like they need additional right-of-way to complete the project, what would be the process? They go either purchase it outright from who owns it, or they can come back?
Or we condemn it for them if it's for the street. I mean, I think the reality is it's not going to get realigned. Realignment is making it essentially a 90-degree intersection. That requires other people's property. That's not happening. So Ms. Watson will then go to Plan B. So, Ms. Watson will then go to Plan B, which will be, what's, what's the way to make this the safest we can make it within the right-of-way? That's undetermined. Because we don't, we haven't any plans from them, we don't know any, so I mean, there could be, make it one way. There, there are various options to make sure that there's not as much traffic coming out of that, that, that entrance.
That works, thank you very much.
So, our, our staff and engineer will obviously be involved in, in determining the solution, what the solution is, and then-
Correct.
Within our right-of-way, and then they'll be required to make those changes, correct?
It, it just won't be a realignment.
Okay, okay. Makes sense. Any other questions?
Do we need a motion and a vote?
Yeah, the motion would be, the motion to confirm the understanding that additional right-of-way does not need to be acquired.
Ms. McGee?
I'd like to make a motion that we understand that additional acquisition of additional property for a right-of-way is not required, and that they can make their road improvements within the existing right-of-way.
Perfect.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Pose nay. All members voted for the motion. Item G, discussion and possible action to adopt amended I G A for development of coed property at the Bluffs.
Back in June, council received a draft intergovernmental agreement for us to transfer property, sell property to the Development Authority of Cherokee County that we own at Bluffs Parkway, to continue corporate and light industrial park in the area. We submitted that intergovernmental agreement to them for comments. Council approved the version of the intergovernmental agreement at the second meeting in June. They got their comments back to us four days after you had approved it. So, I, I've given you a copy of the redline version of this, and Mr. Dyer and I have both looked at it. In fact, Mr. Dyer did the redline version, so he's very familiar with it. But really, there's only three significant changes that are in here. The first is that we have a remnant piece of property that's adjacent to Park Village, between Park Village and property that we own at the Bluffs, and this allows us to also, to also provide them that strip of property as well. We don't have a need for that particular parcel. The second is that we're agreeing to them, as it relates to the closing on the property, we'll give them any information that we have on the property that we own as part of due diligence. And then the third is that prior to closing, we will discuss what we anticipate the process being in approving their overall site, anything with signage, design on the site prior to closing, so they understand what their development process will look like. So, those are the three major changes. My recommendation would be to council to agree to those changes, and agree to the amended I G A, and allow the mayor to execute that.
Okay.
Mr. Peppers, that narrow strip of land that you were talking about, will that be built upon or used, or is it at a, a line?
Part of it, I believe, will align with the extension of Bluffs Court into that Park Village property. It's, I don't see any buildings being built on it. It's probably going to be site work as it relates to that line.
Is there any way that we can ask them to leave it as a natural area?
One of the conversations that we've had specifically with them about their site, and they've also had with Becker on their site, and recall, there's an additional site below that that the county still owns, a sec, another phase of Park Village, is that overall, what occurs in that entire development, we want to preserve as much green space as possible, including walking trails and things like that through the development. So, that's something that would come back as, as the site development side on it. But they're in agreement that it doesn't need to just be cleared for the purpose of clearing. But I do think that there will be a little bit of a roadway that does go through that parcel.
I've been thinking about developments lately and green space, and I, it's, I don't know if it would be doable, Mr. Dyer, but is there any way that we can ask developments to take an inventory of their property every couple of years and see if there are any invasive species starting to grow there, and ask them to remove invasive species?
I'd have to think about that one.
Can you think about that and let us know in a couple of weeks?
I will, because that's, you're talking about ongoing even after we're done with them.
Yes.
After development's done.
Yes, just, just to keep our sustainability and our green initiative going and caring for our planet. I think we all need to take responsibility for that.
So, let me give that, that some thought.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Ms. Schmidt?
I'll move to adopt the amended I G A for the development of property with Cohen.
Second. Okay. And authorize the mayor to sign?
And authorize the mayor to sign it.
Thank you. Second. A motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Pose nay. All members voted for the motion. We have one item of new business, discussion of proposals for architectural services for house plans associated with Canton Housing Initiatives. This is just for discussion only this evening, I believe, Mr. Patton?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, council members. As part of Canton's housing initiatives, it does include accessory dwelling units, emphasis with affordable workforce housing. As a part of that, staff is of the opinion that the city should contract with an architect to prepare plans that the city would actually own and provide to interested parties if they so choose. These plans would be a five of them in total, three A D U plans, one being a studio plan, a one-bedroom, one-bath A D U plan, and a two-bedroom, two-bath A D U plan. Then a one-story affordable workforce house plan, and a two-story affordable workforce house plan. Staffs and tent that, and I've spoken with all of the architects that submitted bids. I spoke with more than the ones we've received, the proposals and bids on, but only received three bids, and they are aware that the city wants to purchase these and be able to provide them as part of our housing initiatives. I would work with our permit and review process so that once the plans are prepared by the architect, we would have them go through a review process. They would be approved by the city, they would be stamped approved. Then, if someone chooses to use one of these plans moving forward with an A D U or affordable workforce or, you know, house plan, they would not have to bear the cost of purchasing the plans, them being pre-approved. That's going to reduce some of the costs associated with it. Plus, it will reduce the timeline, streamline process for review and approval. I'm not asking for a decision tonight. You do have information from the three architectural firms that did submit. I talked with a total of six architects and firms. All of them were local within Cherokee County. I did not do a request for proposals on this. I really wanted to try to work with local architects throughout this process. I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Patton. First of all, great work on this. It's exciting, I think, on a number of levels. We've talked, been talking about the A D U program for quite a while, and, 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 I mean, I think this kickstarts it and brings consistency to that program, and efficiency to that program, and, and design consistency. So, I think it's very exciting. And I did look at the, the low bidder on that, and I was, I'm very pleasantly surprised with, with, with the, their cost. And I was, you know, I didn't expect the quality of the work, I mean, based on their, on their, on their bid, but to be, you know, the quality that I, that I saw. So, I was, I was pleasantly surprised and, and feel quite, feel they're quite capable of doing, doing the job. So, I'm, I'm excited for a number of reasons, but-
And at the next council meeting, I will make a recommendation for the council, but all of the firms are well-qualified. The low bidder actually has done a good bit of work with John Whelan Homes, the J W Collection. Patrick Malloy, Piedmont Venture has a world of experience, and it's sort of exciting, if you will. These plans, I think, will help. I am working on something else that I'll be bringing to council associated with this in regards to a little handout, if you will, about A D U process, fees, and things of that nature. I'll be asking city council to approve some reduced fees that I've already discussed with other staff members associated with the whole permitting process, if you will. So, be bringing that before you, probably in August, could be September.
Great. You're doing a great job, Mr. Patton. We appreciate it. Any questions for Mr. Patton on, on this subject?
I have a couple of questions, Mayor. Again, thank you, Mr. Patton, for all the work you're doing. I cannot imagine anybody would be better qualified to do this work than you're doing, and you've demonstrated, you know, early on in this process that you're the right person. I'm just absolutely elated that you're in this role. But my questions are, obviously, there's, there's going to, you're working on some reduced fees for permitting. As far as the, the plans themselves, is it our intention to offer those plans to residents at no cost or a little?
Yes, sir.
No cost?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That's a staff's opinion. Ultimately, that would be up to city council, but that's staff's thought, that's why we purchased the plans. I've discussed this at length with all of the architects that I've spoken with. I've worked with the city attorney on some language, and we continue to work on some documentation for the chosen architect relative to license agreements and how that would work with us purchasing the plans, owning them, being able to provide them to others.
Great. And then the second, the second point, it relates to A D Us, and, you know, it's obviously, there's a lot of reasons why A D Us work. They're in use all over the country. We don't really, really have any legal A D Us in Canton. I'm sure there are, you know, basement apartments and over-garage apartments that we just don't know about, but as far as standalone buildings, I don't think we have a single one. So, I'm glad we're bringing this to light, and number one. But you had some ideas that you shared with me, and I would ask if you wouldn't mind sharing with council and anybody that might be listening or watching, your idea as it relates to an A D U on that property up at Laurel Canyon that we're-
Well, as a council has approved a contract with Lew Oliver LLC for a site plan for the Laurel Canyon property. That site plan work is a program to begin the first week in August. I have relayed to that firm that part of their design thought and layout relative to the residential lots for that piece of property. I told them basically one of, one of those lots to be large enough that we could put the primary structure and affordable workforce house on that lot, but it'd also be large enough that we could put an A D U on that lot, so we would have an example, if you will, to show the citizens of the city of Canton what could be possible with a primary structure and an accessory dwelling unit.
Awesome. Thank you, sir.
I believe with the A D U program and what we're doing up at the property of Laurel Canyon, I mean, you know, it's just really great creative solutions to affordable workforce housing. So, again, it's exciting to see this council and this team really thinking outside the box and, you know, looking at solutions that will add to our inventory, but also, I think, add to the character of, of, and quality of housing in Canton in general. So, I'm excited. Good work. Mr. Carl?
I'll just note, Mr. Patton, I do appreciate you working on this, something we've all talked about for a while. The, to solve the housing crisis that everybody across the country is facing right now involves a lot of strange things. Increased luxury housing to fix affordable housing. We have to look at other avenues to help alleviate that problem. One reason we see affordable housing not being built is it's, you don't make as much money on it, and it's, your margin's going to be lower. Anything we're doing to help alleviate that, and what you're proposing here, I think is fantastic. Try to help move these process, make the process easier so that we can help increase that stock and offset some of that problem that we're having.
Well, there are a multitude of reasons out there associated with the lack of affordable workforce housing units nationwide, and with things slowing down the way they are, that's going to add to it. But Atlanta Regional Commission, about six weeks ago, published a report, the average home price in Cherokee County is now over four hundred thousand dollars. Some of the indicators that I've been looking at nationwide, that sort of thing, there were over sixty-six thousand contracts for a purchase of homes that were canceled last month nationwide. Builder Confidence Index is down about eight percent. Housing is starting to slow down. I'm hearing that from builders, from bankers, everyone that I've spoken with. Affordable housing, you know, the majority of the housing now is built by what I call production builders. They have a formula, and they're pre-engineered, that sort of thing. Building materials costs are coming down, but, you know, I can give you an example. I talked with someone the other day in which they had put an offer on a development in some property in unincorporated Cherokee County, up Highway Five between Canton and Ball Ground, and they had put a bid in at basically sixty thousand dollars per lot, raw land cost without development. The winning price was sixty-four thousand, raw land cost per lot on that particular piece of property in development. When you've got land costs like that, and then you add in all your grade and infrastructure, that sort of thing, it's easy to see why you can't provide affordable workforce housing.
Yes, sir.
You have to look at smaller lots, higher density, smaller square footages.
Thank you for your work on that.
Anything else, Mr. Patton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members.
Appreciate it. Mr. Peppers?
Mr. Smith, most of my time on budget, Splat, and intergovernmental agreements, I don't have anything else to say to-
Bless your heart.
It's been a busy month for everybody in the city.
Well, we'll, we'll go with that, so. We had no council introduced items, just checking, so, and I have nothing except thank you, everyone, for the continued great work. It's great, we have an approved millage rate, and looking at a budget where, where we're going to accomplish great things in the next fiscal year, so I just remain excited. So, thank you all. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Oh, Ms. Wilson?
I'll, I will make a motion to adjourn after I make a statement. I just want to thank everybody on the team for, for being so sweet and so nice and not kicking me off. I appreciate it all very much, and I'm making a motion to adjourn this minute.
Second.
A motion and a second, and before we take a vote, you deserve it every bit, Ms. Wilson, and we thank everything, thank you for everything you do and contribute to our city, and I think just list, listing that, that list of the ways you've contributed over the years is, is, you know, I ran out of breath reading it, and I know that, I know that that was probably only half of the things that you've done, so thank you for all you do and continue to do, so.
Thank you so much.
With that, we'll, all in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. We are adjourned.